So you have to do that tonight?
Yeah.
Earlier, yeah.
I get to this.
Yep.
Yeah.
I heard we did a thick, thick.
But it wasn't.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this special work session for our Planning Commission on October 26th. We're so glad that you could all join us this evening. Thank you to the public for your attendance and for those of you who are joining us by Zoom. We appreciate your time so much this evening. Also, this evening, I want to welcome the newest Planning Commissioner. This evening will be her first time with us, Molly Entavine. So thank you for serving and thank you for volunteering and we really appreciate your help. Please do reach out to Molly and get to know her. She has served in many capacities in the town over the last four and a half years. And we're really excited to have her be a part of the commission. So thank you. And we're going to call the meeting to order now. Mr. Unsworth, could you please read the role?
Yes, sure.
Here, oh.
Commissioner, yeah.
Yeah.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Here. Here. Thank you so much. Do I have a recommendation to accept the agenda as presented?
Oh, I mean to accept the agenda as presented?
I second. Thank you, having a second, all in favor? I. Opposed? And it passes, the agenda has been accepted for this evening. We're going to move on to item number two, which is a discussion on public comments and engagement practices for the town of Scottsville. And Mr. Unsworth, will you be sharing with us? Mr. Lawless? Great.
Well, thank you all. Appreciate the follow up from previous meetings and the chance for us to reflect a little bit on how we best go about our public comment and engagement. It's really important to what we do to make sure that everybody in town and in the wider community is well informed of our work and that we keep to our productive meetings and make sure that everybody's heard from and that we can really engage with everyone in our community. That's been a great part of the work that I've done here so far. I really enjoyed meeting neighbors and working together on things like area plans and building projects. We had some questions come up in the past couple of meetings around how we structure those. They've been, these meetings have been fairly informal in the past and there were rules of procedure for the planning commission attached there. Don't speak to how we do our public comment and our public hearings. You've got some detail in the rules of procedure about what the agenda looks like and about the conduct of board members, but not about the conduct of the public. So that might be an idea for an action item to clarify. Many public bodies have in the rules of procedure, this is, this is how we handle public hearings and helps out some expectations and ground rules for everyone. On the other hand, you have different degrees of formality in different kinds of arguments. So I do appreciate being able to be more formal in certain settings and more casual in, you know, and you've got the prerogative as a, as a group and as a chair to set some of those rules case by case. Based on the questions coming up in the last couple of meetings, I consulted with our town attorney on some of the legal basis for public comment. And it's, it's pretty open ended in state law. You have specific code sections on when you have to have public hearings, things like the ones we have tonight before a zoning tax amendment, before changing some of the property rights or at the town council level for a budget. You have to have a public hearing before you take on certain matters. But the code is quite vague and silent on how those, how those hearings are conducted. So the, the go to code section is within the general grant of powers to local governments that you, you set the rules that suit you for the efficient conduct of your meetings. And the group has wide latitude and the chair has wide latitude to format that public comment in different ways. So you see different speaking limits, different periods of time given to public comment. Some bodies don't have a public comment period every meeting. They do it quarterly. And for a, for a topic, for a technical agency like the jail board, they don't always get a lot of public comments. So they, they don't structure public hearings as a big part of what they do. Our attorney gave the example of a case that he litigated when he represented the Admiral School Board. They were sued in federal court when they worked on limiting the comments of the public to a specific amount of time during rallies in the vote because they wanted to move on with the meeting efficiently. The speaker refused to stop and the police removed him from the meeting. The speaker sued for an infringement of the First Amendment rights. The county held that was within its power to move its meeting along efficiently and the county prevailed easily. You see many bodies will set either a shorter period of time to say, you know, we'll take half an hour for public comment and that needs to be 10 people times three minutes or an unlimited number of people on a short period of time. Those can be defined in the regulations of the procedure. Or you can change the case by case for the format of the agenda and how much is there. If you set it up in your rules of procedure, if you wanted to then deviate from that, a motion to suspend the rules is the way to proceed. If you have the normal procedures and then anyone can move to suspend the rules and then make new guidelines for that purpose. That's some of the background that I've heard. What other kinds of questions come to mind? I've only spoken to the conduct in the meeting, there are lots of other kinds of data.
Question? I guess I have a question about emails. How, how should emails be conducted? Is that governed in our, in our rules?
You have FOIA requirements that your emails are discoverable and the kind of rule of thumb that you not put anything in email that you wouldn't want in a newspaper. But in terms of, you know, email protocol, that varies widely how, how in depth you want to be on it and however you want to use that email. We have, we have some law on rapid back and forth emails between the group when it gets to the frequency of like doing business by email, like where it approximates a conversation, that's when you have to stop and, and notice something that you can't use rapid fire emails to get around calling me. But in terms of, you know, how active you want to be on counting there, some council members are very rarely getting off them and that's their, that's their, that's their right. Is that what you were getting to?
That answer is fine. Thank you.
I have a question along those same lines. When someone writes in and addresses it to the Planning Commission and Town Council, what's the order of priority as far as who is expected to respond? And is there, is there an order would say Mayor Ron respond first, given that it's also to the town councillor or would it be to me or any of the other commissioners to join in?
I think that's probably a protocol to go over with council. If, yeah, I'm not familiar with any kind of rule about how responsive it has to be. I've seen that where everyone gets a question and then one answers it and then another answers differently and the questioner hears that. But I don't know, I don't know a protocol for it.
Yeah, if it's technical in nature, you know, something that that I can easily answer, we tend to jump in on that. And of course, if people are responding directly to the sender, we don't see, you know, how many responses there might be. But yeah, I think that's point of, that would be a step protocol.
I guess I kind of have a question of along the lines of emails. If we're receiving emails that are really more of a public comment, does that kind of negate what we're doing in the hearings? Or does it circumvent that? Or?
When they're, if they're, if they're specifically tagged as a public comment in advance, we'll, we will retain those and attach them to our public hearing record.
Okay.
Because one of the ways that the public is allowed to work in a public hearing is by submitting comments and writing. If someone's not comfortable or not able to speak and they want to submit comments and writing, that's fine. So if, if the comment is described in that way, we'll, we'll report it that way.
Okay.
But the legal requirement to hold a public hearing requires that we hold a meeting like this, open to the public, to meet all of those FOIA requirements. So if an issue comes up on the agenda and you get 100 emails of public comment that does not satisfy the public comment requirement, you still need to have people in an opportunity to comment.
Okay.
So the basic idea of the law being that these meetings are open to the public. We announce that the meeting is happening, the door is open, anyone can come and say the piece. And then there's all manner of engagement above and beyond, online and outside of this meeting that we can try to do to get that.
Yeah, I think also if we're limiting the time period for people to speak, you know, they can express themselves a little better in writing. Okay.
But the constitutional principle here is called limited public forum, that there are absolute free speech zones. The front steps of the courthouse is the last example where almost anyone is free to say almost anything. This is not fact that the, the primary role is the efficient conduct of the government's business. So certain restrictions on that speech are quite legal to focus on the efficiency of the meeting. And that can relate to the time, place and manner of how that speech occurs, but not the content. If someone wants to speak for or against an item, that was just.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Molly, just the question.
Okay, great. Anybody else have any questions? Great, thank you so much for clarifying that. And will you be bringing that up as well with Town Council?
Yes, I think this will be a work, work session agenda item to discuss setting these rules. And if you guys would like to put that on a future month.
Yeah.
Agenda, we can do that especially.
Absolutely. Could we discuss that actually at the November 1st, on the November 1st agenda? Should we put that on there? Okay, super, thank you. And moving on to our first action item tonight, we're going to be discussing the zoning map amendment to commercial for 153 James River Road. I believe Mr. Lawless, you're going to be giving the staff report for this. And we want to welcome also tonight Ms. Slime. She will be giving a presentation for the applicant.
I appreciate Ms. Slime here in person on Zoom. Thanks for questions about the project. The site that we're talking about. 153 James River Road here at the four way intersection with James River Road and Route 1. The core of this property is zone commercial. And a year ago, special use permits approved by planning commission and town council for the Tiger Fuel's market, the car wash, the drive through, a gas station and a retail shop. So we had some discussion in, in the public a year ago about parts of this project. It's been a year that the developer has closed on the property, worked on some of the site plan designs, but also taught the adjacent properties behind them there. They did a parcel bounty line adjustment that affected the property to the south. So what they, what they now have is split parcel zoning, where most of their property is in commercial, but part of it is in residential. The application is to rezone the entire site to commercial. We've got the public hearing on it, having introduced it at the previous meeting. It's all deferred to the applicant now, let them decide what exactly the issues are. But I know we have several members of the public who are, you know, my neighbors and can speak on it.
Right, great. Ms. Slime, would you like to come? Thank you.
Can you hear me okay?
I guess, yeah.
They give off the opportunity to present tonight, my name is Tulsa Shlone, I'm a planner with Shump Engineering. I'm here on behalf of, on behalf of James River Road, LLC, the property owner and Tiger Fuel, the applicant. So Matt mentioned Justin Shump, the engineer is also on the call, but Aaron Revere with Tiger Fuel, he's the 804 number. He's, Aaron Revere is also on the call as, as well and is available for any questions that needs to happen. So as Matt said, kind of orienting you to the site, we're right at the corner of James River Road and Route 20 across the street from Food Line and BB and T Bank there. We did request a special use permit on this site approximately almost a year ago to today for a, specifically for a car wash and a drive through window. The gas station is in the market or by rate uses, the special use permit was specific to car wash and the drive through window. Since then, as Matt said, we've been working on the site plan, the property owners closed on the property. And in that time, the property to the south, which had a pipe stem affiliated with it. And as you can go to the next slide, that would be helpful. So you can kind of see the, the portion of the pipe stem here on the flat, it's labeled as parcel A, 0.427 acres. So that pipe stem was zoned residential and it, and it included the driveway that served a single family home to the south. So it was this pipe stem and then the property to the south, all zoned residential. That property became available since the last time that we were before you. And, you know, Tiger Fuel wanting to invest in Scottsville and wanting to tough their business here, to use the successful, saw the opportunity to acquire that. So that closing didn't happen until the summer of this year. And so as far as the timeline of things, we would have loved to ask this request from you a year ago. It would have saved us a bunch of time. We're having to delay our site plan right now to put this request before you. And I think it would have benefited everyone if we could have talked about this a year ago. It was not an option at that time. And so that's why we're reporting tonight, asking this request of you. So to the next slide. So you can see that the property here, I have the, the blue dotted outline is the, the parcel, kind of, I'll call it the, the parent parcel. And the white dotted outline is the 0.4 acres that, which is a portion of the residential property that was acquired. So you can see here on the future land use map that both properties are designated as commercial in the future land use map. So this request is directly consistent with the future land use map that was adopted in 2018. And I think, you know, looking at this map on a whole, like clearly there was a lot of thought that was put into it. Properties that are existing commercial are identified to remain. You, Scottsville noted in your comprehensive plan in the land use and economic development over and over again, you want to have a strong local business space, you want places for those businesses. You want places where those businesses can be located. You want the uptown commercial cent, the uptown commercial center and the quadrant in the uptown commercial center, which is founded by Route 20, Route 6, and James River Road. You want to have viable businesses in those locations that's put forth in the comprehensive plan. So we really feel that this proposal is consistent with that. And just kind of, I guess, speaking back to the, the thoughtfulness of the properties that were identified. You can see existing properties are designated, existing commercial properties are designated commercial. Property surrounded that designated commercial. And Route 20 kind of serves as a barrier. That's really the, is a divide between the commercial and residential. And so I think in putting, requesting a rezoning of this portion, it's, it's consistent with the land use map. But I think then we also need to look to, to the zoning ordinance and, you know, see how screening can then step in to mitigate the impacts from this development. And because this isn't, this having commercial next to residential isn't an exclusive issue, I'll say, for this property that's going to come up in other, in other properties. And I think that, you know, looking to, to your zoning ordinance, which does have screening and buffering requirements. And, and, you know, reviewing those as, as a planning commission and, you know, with, with the community and ensuring that the screening and landscaping requirements that you all put forth in the zoning ordinance adequately mitigate those impacts from commercial users, I, I think is critically important. So next slide. So just kind of going over the specifics of the request here. It may be a little hard to see, there's a lot going on in specific, but we're trying to convey a lot of information. The outline, I'll just call it the ghost outline, is the, is the concept plan that was presented a year ago. And there's also a dotted boundary line that you'll see as well. On, and that is the boundary line per GIS. So typically, and that's publicly available property information. And typically kind of with concept plans, we use that boundary as a starting point and then get a more specific survey. So this is showing the old concept, but it's also showing the boundary, which you can see, especially on the southern boundary from the concept plan. Once we got the survey information back, you know, realized that the property was, you know, quite a bit shallower from, from what we were originally designing. So just kind of calling out all those features on this. And you'll see specifically that the shift is approximately 30 feet. We've called that out on the canopy. In this location where you can see that the, the trapway and the extensive canopy is shifted over 32 feet. But then additionally, we're also calling out the screening. And the, the screening on Route 20 includes approximately, you know, 60 exalium bushes staggered in a double row. It includes street trees. And I think that landscaping and the provision of landscaping on, on this plan is something that we would, you know, love to discuss with you all further and how this application moves forward. So that's the extent of the presentation that, that I have. And you know, Aaron and Justin are listening, so Aaron, if you have anything else to add, please chime in. But that's all that I have for the good moment.
No, I, I would like first, any questions from the commissioners? For Michelin?
When I see this, it looks like, so you're going to be clearing out all those trees on that tract of land next to Route 20 and replacing it, so with these areas, with the larger trees. I'm a little worried about the impact that that's going to have, not only on the visuals and the experience of driving into Scottsville, like your first approach into town, but also with the sound and visual buffer that that provides for the houses across the street as well. Is that been a part of your site plan in terms of those specific items? And how would you address those?
Sure, well, I think with the, with the trees that are existing, you know, along, along that pipe stem there, you know, regardless of the zoning of the property, any property owner has rights. And those rights include doing with that property as, as you may, in that major cleaning up brush, removing trees, et cetera. So I, I think, you know, with, with this plan, what we're bringing forward, you know, is an opportunity to kind of work through perhaps even a more comprehensive landscaping plan along Route 20 that could even go above and beyond what the ordinance requires with this rezoning request to mitigate impacts. And that, you know, of, of course, we've taken that into consideration. And I'll say, you know, if, if we kind of revert back to a, a site plan that's 30 feet away, that, that extended the same property owner owns that, and they do have rights to do with it as, as they'd like.
Does the property owner have any thoughts or intentions should this not be approved for that parcel?
Yeah, I, I, I think ultimately we'll, we shift everything back 30 feet and provide landscaping in accordance with, with the ordinance. And then, I mean, ultimately, they, they would like to have visibility from, from Route 20 coming down. And so this, it would likely be cleared in that area.
Thank you.
Sure.
I was actually also wondering about the trees. Is there any chance of leaving the existing trees that are there? And maybe just cleaning out some of the underbrush so that you do get a little bit of visibility, but you don't take out the mature trees that are there?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a really good point. We haven't done any type of like specific tree survey on the property. And I think those are, you know, if there's particular trees to, to, to remain in a site plan moving forward, it's, it's helpful to have that information. I, I mean, I will say that we're, we're doing grading work and we're doing other construction work in that proximity. And so it's difficult to, to ensure the longevity of, of the trees in that particular circumstance. Sorry for checking, Aaron is texting me, and so I just want to make sure that he can speak up when he would like. Because I know he's, for, so that's.
Okay. Other questions?
About the actual signage to be, will we get that? That's not on here.
Entrance, um, we have an approximate location that, that, yeah.
That's at that corner.
That little red dot isn't, I mean, that hasn't been decided at this point. But I mean, not as entrance corridor, as signs in the per view of.
The, the signs have on the kicking plant. ARV cancels that before building permits go out. So that would, that would come after site plan and before construction. This would switch over to ARV for landscaping and signs. They've had mixed results following through enforcing that appropriately. Sometimes they approve a good plan and then it's hard to keep landscaping alive. So we've had enforcement problems with Dollar General on that topic. On the other hand, the shopping center has complied with it very well. Food line signs and the landscaping there. So this area is subject to entrance corridor and has that ARV regulation around landscaping and signs. So planning commission can be assured that ARV will, will take care of that.
Great, very good. Other questions? On your design, Ms. Lying, there's, there's the buffer, the green buffer there. And there's also where you've moved the building over. But the rest of the space there is just going to be left empty. That's the remainder of that point through, it ends up being about point three acres that's kind of left over. So you've got that corner down there, you've got just a little strip that looks like about 10 feet across. It's just extra space that's going to stay open, correct? There's not anything else that's going to be put in there?
That area, thank you, Matt, for having me. So that is actually, there's a segment requirement to dedicate 25 feet of right-of-way for any roads that have a prescribed easement. So Route 20 currently has a prescribed easement, the property line goes to the center of road. So there's a 25-foot dedication that will occur, according to the site plan. So that, that will become beat up right.
Great. And then the green along the backside of the property at the very back there, is that planned? Or is that just the natural vegetation that's already on the backside of the property that's going to be preserved? Or could you speak to that as well?
Sure, um, so and, and walking the second from where I believe the property boundary is, it's kind of landscaping is a little sparse in that back area. So all of this is replacement. And that's due to the commercial requirement that there can't be grading or construction activity within 20 feet of a residential property. And so this screening is showing that we're, we're also requesting, because the adjacent owner is the same owner, even despite the, the fact that that property is zoned residential, we're requesting that we can conduct construction and grading activity in that rear buffer, provided that it's replanted in accordance with this.
Right. And so those will be uniform trees, the same basically that would be, and shrubs that were out in the green space in the corridor. They're going to be mirrored or?
So this, the, we haven't, the way we have it expect currently is their rear are, are reviving. So they're screening trees. And then along Route 20 is screening shrubs. So there is alias.
Okay. And you had mentioned the pipe stem and what about water runoff and those types of things? How are you handling that?
Sure, all of that, so, you know, regardless of, of the, the size of the site or, you know, how, how the geography plays at, at every, where the boundaries are, all of that will be considered as part of the stormwater management plan, which is reviewed by our upcoming.
Excellent. Other questions, commissioners? I'd like to open up to the public and who would like to speak just to this particular special use. Yes, Mr. Goodman?
Yes. George Goodwin, White Collar resident, Scottsville area. Used to be in town, now just outside of here. Oh, I can speak to this, the way that, as somebody that's lived through, I went away, but I came back. Always there for us. The Route 20 corridor and this little bit of stripper property of the Dawson property, if you really go up there and walk it, there's a driveway down the middle that has no trees at all, anyway. And a lot of the trees that are along when the indoor, the invite that develops as you go down the hill, I think it could proper, properly be taken care of and graded and planted probably much better. Maybe you leave a few trees that are select ones there, but sometimes when you do that, grading it to make it better for erosion control is even part of it. Um, secondarily, talking about the Dollar Store property and the problem enforcing that. Dollar Store did put in a separate water meter and sprinkler lines along there. It's just the customers continue to run over top of that. You see that box near the entrance of the Dollar Store, right there on the side of the bank? That is their, uh, remains, I guess, of their water sprinkler system. And that could be resurrected and they could do a lot better job than they have, I'm, for sure. But I'm sure if you look at all of the Tiger Fuel property around town, you'll see that they're pretty good. Really look at it and the effort that they put in to make it attractive. Sure, it's commercial, but they're all attractive. And I think it would be a benefit to consider moving the commercial side completely level over there and allow them to do for right there.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Goodman. Appreciate that. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this topic from the public? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
I would like to say something. I'm Nancy Gill, I live at 133 James River Road. And my property is across from this site. And a year ago, I was for the site plan 110%. I'm behind it now about 75% because now it is going to infringe upon my property more than it would a year ago. Also, I would like to ask, when you, in the site plan, when you shifted the build-out to the east or toward 20, were you allowing for a road between this property and structural steel that could possibly help future build-out of the overall site?
Slime? Yes, please.
Sure. Thanks for the question. Yeah, thanks for the question, still. So the, the, there's really no wins for that area, honestly. The high-level plan was, can some type of complementary commercial user go in that area? It's about a half acre site. We haven't thought about a road. Guess we just haven't been made aware of any potential desired connections. But so everything that we've been thinking through has just been complementary, complementary commercial kind of, you know, barbershop, some small little shop that you want to happen in here, could in that area.
Great, thank you. Are there any other comments from Zoom?
Well.
Yes, you can.
Um, Ms. Gill, I think I have a question for you. Being that I don't know if anyone else here is representing the homeowners across the way. What would you like to see happen with that boundary there? Would you like to, are you happy with what you're seeing as far as the shrubs and the trees? What, or, I don't know, what thoughts do you have about that? Especially with your experience in town council and as the mayor?
Thank you, Lisa. I am probably going to say that the property owners south of me are completely unaware of this. And to me, I think it's probably the sign, you know, if, if the trees and shrubs are planted appropriately and if they are indigenous to our area, because we are a B city, I, that's very important to me. But I just don't like that sign on the corner. You know, the BBNT sign sits down off the road. This is right in my line of sight from any of my front rooms. And I think that's what I'm opposed to the most.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. Maybe Nancy can help with that. So originally, when this was put forth to the town council and the planning commission, was that area in consideration at all? Was it, was it told that Tiger Fuel was looking to purchase that tract of land? Or did that come later? You know, it sounds like Nancy is a little surprised at, at the turn of events. And I was just curious if that just became something you were looking at? And you said, boy, wouldn't it be great to have that part of land? Or, you know, like, was it considered that from the beginning when you were making this plan?
Sure. And Aaron, I'd definitely invite you to chime in on the, on the timeline of this, this acquisition. If you heard the question. But, you know, from, from my standpoint, is, you know, being, as my firm being hired to work on this plan, we were, we brought forward the plan a year ago with the property that we knew about. And then our client acquired that property basically almost 10 months after we were first told about, to, to, to make their request for the special use permit. And that, that property wasn't closed on until six months after the approval. So that's the timeline that I have. Perhaps Aaron might be able to shed a, and feed some additional light on that, but.
This is what council saw a year ago. So it, it had, it had this buffer. And I, I, I remember that being described as a positive at the time.
And I would think so. I, I don't think that there was any kind of motive there. I just was curious if it was part of, you know, that that was definitely a plus to kind of give that buffer to Route 20 and the residents along there. So I was just curious.
If, Aaron, can you say anything about the, the sequence of how this developed?
Yeah, hello, can you?
Yeah. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, first off, I'm sorry I'm not there in, in person for this, but yeah, we were, after we bought the current property and did the site plan. We were a few months later approached by agents of that property with the opportunity to buy it. Uh, and after a while, we went through and did do that. And it wasn't until after kind of looking at that, that we revisited. And the site plan and plans and we're thinking through, you know, potential other uses out the back that we said, you know, what, what could we do? Here and, and it was in fact, we didn't think that this kind of zoning district buffer line. That we're here talking about today was even an issue at the time when we closed, but upon further review. You know, especially with Kelsey, Kelsey's expertise, we, we, we brought that forward with, uh, with the town to make sure that this was straightened forward. But, but yeah, it, it was not, uh, at the time we worked on this was not even on our radar and not of interest. Uh, at that moment, um, so it just became an opportunity a- after the fact. And, and I will say that. Uh, we, we are more than willing to work with you all on the comments. I've been taking detailed notes on. Understanding the trees and the roads that are over there. And of course, Ms. Gill, talking with you about what our plans are and make sure it's addressed for you. Not only native, but the signage and all that kind of stuff. So, um, yeah, for sure. Yeah, I hope that helps answer the, this question. And thanks again, guys.
Excellent. Do we have any other questions, commissioners? Or is there anyone from the public that would have any other questions tonight? Yes.
My name is Kevin Quay. I'm actually the agent that brought it to Aaron. So I'm a little bit sort of touchy, feeling you don't want to overstep any boundaries here at all, but I would say this. He was a hundred percent correct in what he just said, and I feel like that's important to, to, to state that. Um, and I also will say that, you know, obviously this is a commercial corner and how you all look at that. To me is important to the neighbors on the other side. I know one of them is a friend of mine. And he was not technically probably aware that they may do some stuff over there on that side, but I would say that. If you look at it from the standpoint, and I don't know how this plays into having commercials, you know, obviously we can do whatever he wants to with that property. He can, he can do whatever. I think the wisest thing is potentially to try to work with him in some manner to. Try to satisfy as much as you can and allow something like this to take place, uh, because it's just the way that it has happened. And that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Quay.
Hi, Sarah Wicks. I just had a quick question. Looking back at the town council notes from 2012, there was a discussion about the possibility of a traffic circle instead of stoplight. Should it ever be needed at this intersection in particular? How would that site and putting the sign right there, moving the adjustment impact the future potential of putting a traffic sign or a traffic circle versus a traffic light?
Great, thank you.
You know how big this background about is? They don't want to be that right away, but yeah. You know how big we're at about this?
Uh, well, I think they, yes, we work on this right away acquisitions often. We've had two projects in the past two years. But yeah, I, I mean, I, I think, I think that I'm starting to make this a discussion and not necessarily a response. Was that from the notes from each of 2012? There was a, a question after prior spin in 2012 about the traffic at this intersection, which has always been. I don't know if it's, I haven't cared. It's always been a discussion for years and years about traffic lanes versus traffic circles or shots. Always stops, that sort of thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not, thank you. So yeah, I guess it's, um, I. We, there, there'd be more to the right of way that would need to be apart than this from this property. I, I think, I, I appreciate that, that consideration. That's definitely something that should be. You know, future transportation improvements should certainly be taken into account, like with every project that's, that's proper for you all. Um, you know, at this point, um, not having kind of a, an identified. Uh, design or at least a preliminary design, it's a little difficult to say how exactly that would take shape in that location. And so I guess, you know. Sorry to say that I, I don't know exactly how much land would be necessary for our property and I think that, uh. But I, I mean, I would say. Gosh, I mean, it would probably, you, just looking at the geometry, you might want to. Kind of say it a little more north for the. Uh, I guess kind of right outside of EBT is, is, is. That might be like, just given the geometry, it might work best with the road. Just looking at it the first time, having heard about this for, for the first instance. So. Yeah, no, 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 that's okay. It's like very helpful for us to have that info. Um, so. I, I guess I, I don't know. I, I don't know what the geometry of the roundabout would be. I don't know whether it would be single lane and half split lanes. Um, all of those things would need to be taken into consideration to see how exactly that would take shape in this site.
They, they do take up a fair amount of space. They take up a space in a four inch section, for sure.
Totally. Yeah, they, they definitely, they, they do take up, um, a, a, a fair amount of space for sure.
Just fine.
Yeah.
So if all of this were codified, you guys had the approval, everything was built and. Everything was good to go and settled. And then the decision was made to put a traffic circle there. And some of the land from that parcel was necessary to do that. Um, how would that affect your current site plan and how would we respond to that?
Yeah, I mean, I think we, we do have like a little bit of, you know, area at the front that's unprogrammed at, at, at the moment. And so. You know, it may compromise on some of that landscaping like at the point, depending on, um, you know, the final sign location and, you know, clearly here from scale. Something for us to, to consider before coming back to town council. But I, I, you know, there's some area for this property to offer, whether, you know, this property bears the burden of offering the entirety of the right of way necessary. Necessary for a picture roundabout. Um, I guess it's a little, you know, hard, hard to say. There's other properties at, at the intersection that I think could all contribute to. Um, you know, making that traffic improvement at some time in the future.
We do not have as much space as the one in Woods at 15 unit.
Yeah.
Good to know. Excellent. Are there any other questions, comments? Yes, yes.
Believe that down lighting on some of these signs, I know you already will be taking this up. Down lighting as opposed to the bright LED or fluorescent certainly helps calm that down and another of the neighbors' concerns that. Have, you know, they, plus, but also if you have a roundabout, um, it's not this bad. It will give enough some property. It's probably losing. Three of the neighbors in their corner between the bank because of the grade of the property. So it's a whole lot more to consider that.
Right. Okay.
Matt, remind me about the notice required for this because if, I know the neighbors. Didn't participate in the previous hearings, but at least Nancy reported that she had a conversation with them. Um, so was notices required for this?
Yes, on, on zoning map amendments, we mail to all of the neighboring property owners. So every, every parcel across the street from this one, all of the residential neighbors, Southwood and Gill got, got mail. Across the corner is outside of town and I didn't mail to, but the, the bank. Children's and the homeowners across the street.
Okay.
As well as our newspaper. But yeah, mail.
Okay. We'll close the public session for this particular topic now. Uh, commissioners, are there any recommendations for town council or would you prefer to defer for more study?
Personally prefer to.
A second though. I would recommend to approve. Okay, we have a division. All right, so we have a recommendation to defer. It has been motioned, it has been seconded. I would like to go ahead to a vote on that and see if it passes. And so would you like to read the rule?
Sure.
Molly and Ty.
Let's see, um, affirmative.
Uh, this would be to give the discussion the next one.
Okay.
Uh, all right. Commissioner, any?
Yes.
Commissioner, help me out?
Nay.
Commissioner Johnson, five. Commissioner, sir.
Nay.
Right, also Lambert.
Nay.
Thank you very much. The motion was not passed three to two.
Is there a recommendation?
I recommend to approve. The zoning map amendment to commercial property at 155 or 153 James River Road.
Is there a second?
I, a second.
Mr. Ensworth, with the second, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner, any?
Nay.
Commissioner, help me out?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson, nay. Commissioner, Strassner?
Aye.
Officer Lambert?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to. Agenda item 3B, the zoning text amendment for flood hazard overlay, section 17, the state model ordinance. Mr. Lawless?
Thank you, commissioners. I put, um, I put two counties of this recommended ordinance. And just to save a couple of trees, I sent this out to you a couple of days ago. The part of the town's zoning ordinance is a, a floodplain overlay. That the, the area that has historically flooded, it treated a little bit differently in our building regulations. That we not build something there that's going to create hazard damage training that washes away. Or that buildings for people's lives be in jeopardy because something is still in a vulnerable situation. Floodplain ordinances are widespread in every community along, along a river. And FEMA produces the floodplain acts that we rely on to, to guide that. FEMA's state level partner is the Department of Conservation and Recreation. Some of the same folks who work on conservation easements and public boat access are also responsible for floodplain safety. So every community with a zoning ordinance and a rule and these kinds of regulations has a floodplain administrator as well. In larger communities, that's a different job and you can get provincial in as a floodplain administrator. By, by law, I have to serve as your floodplain administrator. I'm not a provincial floodplain manager. So I'm at the edge of my expertise here and relying on federal and state support for how to do your floodplain administration. It's, it's job number one in Scottsville. Don't let us flood. We well remember catastrophic and deadly floods in the towns past. And we have to deal with both river runs flooding here in the middle of the James watershed and also flash flooding on Lake Creek. Historically, both of those things have caused the town problems. And we have two sets of flood control structures, a dam at Lake Creek and Scottsville Lake that protects us from downtown flash flooding. And then the levee protecting around downtown protects the river rushing. So in your zoning ordinance is a floodplain overlay district, which marks the areas outside of town. Like the train depot. Renovating and restoring the train depot is very difficult in the future because it's outside of the levee. It's in the floodplain. Anything that you did there would be a disaster. And that, that makes that, that makes that foundation part. Inside the levee, there's a special pack of floodplain zone that says, yes, it's low lining. If the river came up, this would be a problem, but it's protected by the way. So it has a qualified status of it's safe as long as we keep our levee in the future. The floodplain ordinance that we have now regulates what can go in the floodplain and under, under what standards. The classic example is, um, overland parks that get too close to the water's edge. River comes up, overland, I've, I've seen challenges in trees when they've been kicked up and moved by a strong river. You don't want that to happen, especially not in that particular season. So it's important that we have that regulation set. The ordinance that we've got now dates to 2014. And is informed by town councils at that time. FEMA and the State Department of Conservation released a new model ordinance. Based on climate change research and years of best practices or think Katrina follow up, they promulgated that new model ordinance in 2017, before I started working. I only recently became aware of the new model, whatever communication they did to the town in 2017, we didn't get. And I missed the vote off of that. So only now we're home aware of this. Many of my peers around the state have adopted this and I've seen it used very well in communities like my hometown of Winchester. They adopt this model ordinance and produce it very effectively, both for outreach to do it yourself homeowners. This is a little bit clearer regulation and also to property owners who are trying to renovate historic buildings. It's a little more clear on how to treat those. Most of this ordinance is very much the same. You have a regulatory floodway, which is the main channel of the floodwaters. Very little can go in there. And the, um, the most important kind of floodway enforcement that I do relates to that spot. That if you're putting something big in that floodway, it's either at risk of getting washed away. Or it's pushing the floodwater onto somebody else's property. That water has to go somewhere. So every, everything that you put in that space is putting water somewhere else and that's hurting all of our neighbors. So we treat that floodway enforcement pretty, pretty stern. And the only floodplain enforcement that I've done in my time on the job here. Has been when somebody might have put something that they shouldn't have in that main channel of the floodway. That's what we take most seriously. Other standards of building code relate to how buildings are constructed in the floodplain. Where that water comes up and spreads out, it'll get wet, but it's not pushing so hard that it's going to carry something away. You see that if you go down on the riverbank where the boat watches when the river comes up. The main channel of the river is moving really fast, but then it's sort of ebbies out on that bottom land. It's wet, the water could be quite deep, but it's not moving so fast. So the building code standard on those is the order to be able to pass through. So you see things like an elevated foundation if. If this is the high level of the floodwater, the floor of my house needs to be here. I have to elevate my floor above where that hundred, hundred year flood level is. And then I've got, say, openings to my crawl space in my foundation with vents on them flexed so that that water can just pass underneath of my house. Not getting in my bed, but as long as my house foundation is built well and I have expensive water to go through, I'm okay. So those are the regulations on new construction. That's what, that's what's in this ordinance. We have some clearer standards on accessory structures. When I put that garden shed out behind my house and it's down lower, closer to the creek. We have some regulations on that. How big it can be, how squarely it needs to be made. And then it'd be well certified that garden shed never be turned into a mother in law apartment. That the house gets sold, we forget how quickly the water can come up. Vent out the shed after you fix it up. Now you've got a floodplain violation, a dangerous situation. So this speaks to that. There is a significant exemption in this ordinance for historical properties. That's probably the most important technical change in this ordinance, that it creates. Kind of a grandfather in protection for historic properties, but also sort of a buyer beware situation. That there are some gaps in Scottsville's Main Street. Where buildings have been lost to fire and flood over the years. It's like a, um, like this mile that gaps not connect. Where buildings used to be there and they're not anymore. Others have survived. The. Scottsville Supply Store at the corner on Main Street has flooded many times. Tavern on the James Open has flooded many. Tavon on the James open has flooded many times. Those buildings were maintained. And so this regulation provides for some exemptions for them. If the owners want to continue to do historic rehab work, they don't necessarily have to build them back up to the same code. Renew their entire foundations. Those could be prohibitively extensive changes. But if they want to get their flood insurance and take the chances on it, they're allowed to do that. So I like this model ordinance in providing some clearer regulations on new construction. But also creating some flexibility on historic renovations. So I was impressed with this ordinance that it seems to meet the needs of Virginia's river towns and cities. All of which are historic. From Richmond and Lynchburg to Winchester and Woodstock. They all have buildings along the river that might flood. And they all need to invest in the mansions. So they need a renovation that's going to do that. So all that being said, what we've got before you is the State Department's model ordinance. With just a couple of kind of yes or no changes to it. Where we have a choice of what to do. So we've picked those options which are footnoted through it. That we think we can administer most easily. And replacing the current ordinance with the new model ordinance to rerecognize that. Certainly doesn't have to happen now, but it felt important to me once I learned of it. That we have, we have old law which is not the best practice. But who goes to change it sooner than we can?
Right.
That makes sense? Happy to walk through more of what's in there.
Any questions?
About the sequence from here where this goes to town council and how? What is the action of the ordinance?
Sure. Planning Commission has the responsibility to study changes to the zoning ordinance and make recommendations to town council. The law doesn't change until council adopts it. Commission can revise, council can revise. If that's a text amendment. The other part of this that's important is that this provides the rules within the overlay district. I'm also concerned that our floodplain map is not accurate. The surveying technology has gotten better in the last thirty years since we last made our maps. And it's raining harder and more often than it used to. So without being too catastrophic about it, our FEMA friends are saying the hundred year flood is worse than it used to be. So when we redo our maps, our floodplain area might get bigger. So the first step is to redo the rules for the ordinance. And then update our maps. And we might find that that floodway gets a little bit bigger, the floodplain gets a little bit bigger. And then properties that maybe didn't have to worry about this would then begin to. But that's important to do. And back in August, town council directed me to apply for a state grant. To go ahead on the funding for this floodplain mapping. So I've got that grant application figured out, we'll send on that next week. That might be a hundred thousand dollar engineering project. Which is fully paid for by the state because of Scottsville's demographics. Historic and relatively low income. So they'll help us update the map. But they also require that we have updated ordinance. So that we can best use the map.
Great.
Quick question. You mentioned the depot. Does this kind of pave the way or kind of narrow the scope for that kind of project?
It's a good example of the historic preservation protections. I think it provides a little bit more flexibility for the depot. That renovating that building might get a little bit easier to do legally within the floodplain ordinance. It doesn't change the way that the building is at this, on the long side of the levee. I wouldn't want my hearing collection there.
Okay, thank you.
Public, would there be anyone who would like to speak to this topic tonight? Yes. Do we have anyone on Zoom who would like to join in? No. Commissioners, would you have any further questions about this ordinance?
When we make a vote tonight, is that to put it into next meeting for public review? Or is that to approve it?
To, it would be to actually send it to town council or to deny it as an option. Do I hear a recommendation? Oh, I'm sorry. Public hearing is officially closed on the topic. Do I have a recommendation?
I recommend we move forward with this as it appears and present it to town council for their approval.
Excellent. Having a second, Mr. Ensworth, would you please call the role?
Commissioner?
Yay.
Commissioner?
Yay.
Commissioner?
Aye.
Commissioner?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. All right, moving on to our last action item tonight. The zoning text amendment for parking section four eleven. And could we have the staff report please for that, Mr. Lawless?
Thank you. I excerpted the key paragraph in our supplemental regulations before me. This is the two pages zoning ordinance four point eleven point two. The town's parking regulations are pretty extensive related to on-street and off-street parking. When there's a new use of both residential and commercial, new construction in town. The construction has to provide adequate parking. So you saw a little bit of the sketch for the Tyger Foods property. They show their parking lot area. And the number of parking spaces that they provide off of James River Road is dictated in our ordinance. So there's pretty expensive tables detailing for every different kind of use. From barbershop to theater to restaurant. How much traffic is expected? How many parking spaces do you need for that use to make sure that it's adequate on the site? That is a topic for debate, whether those numbers are correct or not, whether we need to have them. But holding all that aside, we have one and they govern all new construction in town. Whether it's a cluster of new homes or a gas station, et cetera. But it doesn't apply in the entire town. So we have at four point eleven point two, this exemption on Valley Street between Warren and Main. That all of the parking requirements are waived. Reason being, those buildings pre-get cars, the buildings fill the entire lots. There's no space for those buildings to have their own parking lots. You couldn't need the required parking requirements for a forest or a barbershop or a restaurant on the property. And that would make the properties legally useless. So recognizing that reality, that exempted, and when it becomes the town's responsibility to provide adequate on-street and off-street parking. As public infrastructure. That's why we have the lunchroom spaces that we do, why we have the off-street lots that we do. To support those businesses. And that gets to the discussion we've been having about how we mark, charge for those services and force that parking. Because the businesses can't provide it on their own. What I've heard recently is concerns from building owners and investors. That maybe Main Street should have the same kind of exemption and protection. In particular, looking at the post office buildings on West Main and the bus depot building on East Main. Both of those buildings are vacant and unused. And as I've talked with potential buyers on them, they think about a business concept like an office suite or a restaurant. They look at the parking requirements and they say, I can't do profitable business at this site. That my restaurant might seat fifty people, but that would require twenty-five parking spaces. There's not twenty-five parking spaces, only ten parking spaces. That means I've seen twenty people. That's not a profitable restaurant. No deal. So this is an economic development problem. So I bring it to you as a, a challenge and opportunity of legislatively, it would be a very easy fix. Provide the same kind of exemption on Main Street that you have on Valley Street. I think it would open up investment opportunities at these properties. And I see fewer parking problems on Main Street than we have on Valley Street now. So Main Street spaces are rarely full. So that's a reason.
Excellent.
We found a commentary from, for instance, the renters on that initial part, the passing intersection. Do they have any comments to be heard from them or anything?
We had a little bit of that when the Scottsville Supply was up on discussion. That the on-street spaces are a crime in that building. They do have the rear lot, but the Main Street spaces are more popular. So you see some drop in for those between the apartments and the businesses next door and the park on the other side. That's probably the place area that we have there.
I mean, I would say that we probably don't really have much of a problem now because we don't have a lot of businesses. But if we opened this up, and I'm all for economic development, but as a planning commission, we need to plan and talk about what are we going to do? And parking becomes a problem. It's not a problem right now, but what can we grow into? How can the town provide the parking when the need arises? What options do we have down the route?
Sure. You see, you see some public spaces provided at our parks. The community center is the biggest downtown parking lot. The farmer's market has some spaces, Canal Basin Square has some spaces. And then we have one street along Main Street, almost as far as the gate.
How much of that at Canal Basin Square is for the pharmacy and how much of it is town?
The ones that the property line goes down the middle.
Okay.
So we've got the row of six or eight spaces that front the park. And then the ones that pull into the wall, the pharmacies will fall over that, or coast across that, something.
There's also the lot behind the old Scottsville Supply Store, it's a prime block and that how we let public parking be down at a lot of those boys' girls' clubs. So our planning in here in a few years back did a parking survey for us and found roughly three hundred available parking spaces in the downtown area. Approximately another three hundred in the commercial uptown shopping center area. So about three hundred spaces altogether.
Well, I have to chuckle because when I first moved here, I was always hearing about how parking was an issue on Valley Street. But the reality is we have tons of parking spots. People just don't want to walk. They want to be able to get a spot that's right in front of the shop that they're going to, and that's not reality. And what about the parking behind the apartments down on West Main Street? Are they encouraged to use the lot behind the building? Or are they allowed to freely park on the street? Is there, what's in their leases? Because we had this conversation with the owner who just purchased the Scottsville Supply Building for lack of a better address. So we've asked them to use the back lot when possible to their tenants.
We have a couple of special use permits where the use of the apartments has an off-street requirement on it. Two of those, I think. And the Scottsville Supply Building had that.
Right.
That in the lease, the off-street parking instruction be given. So that the spot right in front of the retail storefront on Main Street doesn't always have a resident parking unit. The Dollar General apartments are the same way. It's in, it's in that permission for the four apartments just up the block here that they be parked off-street.
Okay. And the apartments on West Main, the, what's the name of that complex?
West Main?
Yeah.
East Main.
Oh, East Main, I'm sorry. Right next to Scottsville Supply.
Yes. I don't think there's that same.
Okay. Okay.
They have that lot, but they have it on the street. You've got churches and museums there. It is notable that this act applies to commercial use only parcels. So the, if you have that map, it's not, it's not commercial all the way down Main Street. How many spaces? Red is commercial. So the church property does not apply, but most of Main Street going out from past Canal Basin Square Park and on down, the red is commercial. So that gets the most of, most of the block. And go on the other way, one side but not the other.
So is there a map that talks about the available public parking in Scottsville?
Yes, that's a page in. Credit to the twenty eighteen summer intern who walked around and counted at the parking stations.
In the summer.
Yes.
Calm morally, you're upstairs.
Well, I can certainly look it up, I just was.
It is the map with those numbers. It's mostly down there.
So you had said that there were like three hundred potential within these?
That's the total of all of this. The biggest one being the community center, eighty-six spaces in that corner. The town lot out here is thirty-two. The farmer's market has seventeen. Both sides of Valley Street is twenty-four. West Main, twenty, East Main, another twenty-two. Canal Basin Square, seven. That's below the exports there.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
And like Scotty Biana said, they were barely all full, but some of them are more indenarian.
Right. I'd like to open the public hearing portion of this topic now, Mr. Goodman.
Yes. I'd like to speak to any of the Scottsville Supply came up, it's my daughter. She's presently very cross from beans and the whole ABC store. She's there until the whole building is completely fixed. And that's probably not until it's up to the spring. However, her busy season will come up very soon. Unlike, it's not like spring and warm weather, it's dead winter. Starting December, January, people buy a lot of equipment and these. And most of her customers are from over fifty miles out of town. And they're also over fifty-five years old. Have never tried to carry their own equipment for rehabs down the side and helping even to, let's say, Tamichis. Need to park there to be able to shop up here. It's very difficult. Daughter operates a store by herself, so she helps the customer, she leaves the store unattended to do that. So parking is needed, that people come and go along this corridor as opposed to park instead. And even some business owners, we're encouraged to not block the street that tall anymore. It's just, we used to have to our parking in all of Scottsville. I grew up here, I remember. The cop wearing the tire with the white chalk and coming back two hours later checking it out. I know there's not an opportunity for that kind of employment anymore for anybody to afford it. We certainly could enforce some things that we obviously would see. But yeah, I'm there. Appreciate your help.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Do we have, is Ms. Greer actually in the Zoom audience tonight?
She was earlier.
I know that she brought one of these questions to us.
I appreciated talking with her about it earlier.
I would like to say something.
Yes, Ms. Gil?
So it seems to me, two-hour parking on Valley and East Main Street. The problem there is making sure people are there for only two hours. We don't have the staff to do that. We don't have the funding to do that in the town. Perhaps it's time that we actually Perhaps it's time that we actually have one area in town that is the loading. And that's it, from, I don't know, eight to six, whatever the hours are. We have tractor-trailer trucks pulling up throughout areas of the town at any given time, but we don't have a place for them, a specific place for them to actually park their truck and unload to our various businesses. I think that is the way we need to go. And to Mr. Goodwin's, and I understand the predicament he and his daughter are in, but can they have their customer base access the back of the building? There's lots of parking behind the old ABC store, what used to be Ace Scott Realty, and we have Peter Sherman has his BB and T office, which I believe he's no longer running. So are there opportunities there instead of turning everything into two-hour parking? That's my question and my suggestion. Thank you.
I can answer that. The space behind there that Nancy is speaking about is the ABC property, the little telephone exchange building, Ace Scott Ward property, Peter Sherman property, and even access for the Chinese restaurant. And they're wanting to their property. There are several allocated spots, but ultimately there will be one for her store. And right now, she chooses to park off-street, actually utilize that spot. And the alleyway, it's prohibited even for the service master truck with four people unloading. She got chased away by the town police for even trying to unload her, actively unloading. So unfortunately, that property doesn't present itself. It's going to be used as downstairs in the old Scott Ward property plus apartment above. By the time they start allocating that, it's one of these. So unfortunately, it's not.
Thank you. Would there be any other public comments? We will close the public hearing portion of this topic. Commissioners, do you have any other questions?
Yeah. So the application before us is to remove the exemption, the, this parking law ordinance, section four dot eleven dot two, remove that as it applies to.
If you would be to extend that, as it currently applies to Valley Street between Warren and Main, to buy along Main Street between wherever you think we are.
Okay, because the exemption is only Valley Street, but, okay, gotcha.
It's adding a further exemption.
Gotcha.
So are we even discussing the two-hour parking?
No, that doesn't live in the zoning ordinance. We can we've got the parking enforcement hour in another part of town. And so the amount of the parking ticket, how we're willing about that enforcement and what the zones are for anything we put on a sign. That would separate them.
Okay.
We extend the exemption, will there be an opportunity for existing businesses thereafter to apply for designated parking spots for their business?
Yes, that's the same kind of regulation separate from zoning. If council wants to dispose of those spaces in any way, for example, just by charging for it, that would be a council decision. I could imagine a central arrangement of a prime on-street space that is currently open to everyone. The town only took rented. Could be a way of staying who wants most.
I think I'd like to know what, if any, steps have been taken to get local business owners and employees to use the off-street parking when possible.
Some businesses are diligent about that on their own and some are not. They recognize that the spaces in front of their businesses need to be for their customers. But if they, if they don't take that seriously and they're hurting their own business or their neighbors, I leave that for neighbors to work out on their own. You know, the parking ticket enforcement is one thing, but if someone is unwisely using a parking space for a business, I don't think that's an enforcement matter. I know business owners do talk to each other about how far these spaces are to. I think that's where we go about that.
I have a question about the item B. So do do the businesses between Warren Street and Main Street on Valley Street currently require off-street loading spaces?
No, because they're exact. When you build a new if your roof involves truck track, if you need a loading space that's different from your parking space.
Right.
So the Tyger Fuel Site Plan probably will have a loading space designated where the delivery truck will ton, or where the tanker truck will ton. So the new construction outside of the historic district has that. The problem arises when you have these old buildings which are exempt from those requirements and weren't built with tractor-trailer trucks in mind, we now have to try to squeeze them in. And without knocking down a historic building to make a loading space, there's nowhere to put the trucks.
Right, and then why is the police force harassing people that are unloading in these historic spaces?
That I'm not sure on. That's an important town council follow-up.
Right.
May I answer that?
I think we're going to have to move on, sir, just because of time, but thank you. We're gonna, we're gonna need to, noted, we're gonna need to move on. Do I have a recommendation tonight or a move to defer?
Well, I'm okay with recommending to expand this exemption, but I would like to have a follow-up conversation about the loading zones. So I guess my motion is that I make a motion to add exemptions for Main Street and the remainder of Valley Street.
I'm sorry.
Is that okay? No.
The remainder of Valley Street?
Is there a portion of Valley Street that's, okay, never mind. Help me.
On your, on your, on your, on your, you have a potential.
Recommend to town council.
There you go. That's all we have.
Okay, I can't move this to town council.
As presented.
As presented.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Ensworth, could you call the roll, please?
So why do I always have to go first?
It's the new girl on the block.
I'm going to cause lots of trouble.
No, I would like to know what I should say.
The affirmative here would be that the proposal effects that we've just discussed gets moved forward.
You know, it's even simpler than that. What do I say in the affirmative?
Hi. Hi or yay.
Yay, yeah.
I like yay a lot, but okay, sorry. Um, I.
I. Hi.
Thank you all very much.
Excellent, thank you so much. This concludes the regular business for tonight, for this work session. I would ask the public, or thank the public actually, for coming tonight and for your time and for all of your comments, we really appreciate it. And thank you, those who have joined by Zoom. We're going to move to a closed session now, so I would ask that you excuse yourselves, please, and the meeting will continue. Thank you.
Matt, questions about the parking spaces that they leave? This map has stated sixteen of them, is that?
Parking areas, if you come down to the right gate, there's an area on the right there, it's a little bit of a grassy area.
Let me get some tables, we're going to need that. We're going to take like a three-minute, just a three-minute break, can we do that?
What's easiest, do you want to motion into closed session first and then take a break?
That'll help me with cutting the mic. This is your closed session procedure. It's a, it's a separate motion to enter closed session. There's a specific list of reasons in state law about when you can do this and what to talk about. So the motion would be in order to enter that closed session. And the point that you asked for about a chair was number, the second one on that list related to the conduct.
Assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, that one?
Yeah.
Perfect. I move, can I say it?
You could, you could ask. Anyone who just says so is all you need here.
I asked for the motion to move to closed session. Thank you. I. Yay!
Yay!
No.
Can enter closed session.
Yes, I will read it. I move that the commission enter a closed meeting as authorized in subsection A of Virginia Code, section two dash two, three, seven, one, one, specifically the subsection assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion. Don't move it. Salaries, disciplining, resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees of any public body. Right? Is that, is that what she asked?
Thank you, Molly, yes. Do I have a second? A second? And for this one, you can just have all in favor.
Okay. All in favor?
I.
All opposed?